I'm saying.
They don't, I don't know, they don't.
I'm captured in my office. And I got behind three guys. I'm in the truck at that one thing.
How many acres, how many acres have they got?
Why don't you call the police on them?
I have a reason why I don't.
I know, I know.
But I mean, well, I'm over the cars there. Yeah.
When I go somewhere, I'm a parent.
You're breaking the law.
It's funny, I got my old, is this the new?
Well.
Changed it, change it.
I have an idiom on it.
That's the engineering thing.
Oh.
What?
Cause I took my book with you and I've already gotten it.
Why'd you get?
Well, you're just kidding.
Okay.
Here we go again, I'm about to conduct the meeting, I don't have the right agenda.
It says September 3rd.
But they need two guests. This is that one and added one.
Oh yeah, cause we removed one.
I'd like to call this September 3rd meeting of the Coopel City Council to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Anderson.
Present.
Councilman Shelton.
Here.
Mayor Salee.
Present.
Vice Mayor Davis.
Present.
Councilman Williams.
Present.
All present.
Very good, thank you. If we could all rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Alright, do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda, Mr. Shipley?
We have one addition, item nine, consider approval of an engineering contract with Clinton Engineering for the design of improvements to South Jefferson Avenue at the intersection of the extension of West Cemetery Road, sponsor Greg Brown.
Alright, thank you very much. Do we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Have our motion second, any discussion by the council? Seen none, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Shipley. Item two, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held August the 20th, 2009. Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have our motion and a second, any discussion by the council on those minutes? Any comments from the audience? Seen no comments, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. That brings us to item three, in our new business, hold a public hearing, consider on first reading, ordinance 090813, 815, excuse me, amending the zoning code pertaining to electronic reader boards in the CN neighborhood commercial zone, sponsor Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, this ordinance adopts a number of amendments to the general sign regulations of the zoning code pertaining to freestanding signs, wall signs, and the use of electronic message centers and reader boards in the CN district. The proposed amendments stem from a request considered by the planning commission early this year to allow electronic message centers on freestanding signs in the CN district. Electronic message centers and reader boards are currently prohibited on freestanding signs in the CN district, which you know the CN district is our mixed-use zone that's intended primarily for single and two-family residential structures and limited office and business uses. Non-residential structures are required to be compatible with nearby residential structures in terms of scale and appearance. Freestanding signs in the CN district are limited to 50 square feet in sign face area and to a height of 20 feet. These are the most restrictive requirements for freestanding signs in zoning districts in the city which allow commercial uses. The more restrictive requirements are intended to lessen the impact on non-residential uses, of non-residential uses on residential uses in the district. Electronic message centers and reader boards are currently allowed in the CN district as wall signs. Section 207.6(c) of the zoning code specifies that each commercial establishment is allowed one electronic message center or changeable copy sign as a wall sign, provided it does not exceed 25% of the area of the face of the wall in which it's erected. In the opinion of the planning commission and the planning department, an electronic message center occupying 25% of a wall would have a more significant impact on nearby residential properties than a relatively small sign on a freestanding sign. To address this situation, several amendments are proposed. First, we would amend the zoning code relative to wall signs in the commercial districts, in the commercial districts to prohibit electronic message centers and reader boards as wall signs in the CN district, and to reduce the total percentage of a wall that can be used for a sign in the CN district from 50% to 25%. Second, relative to freestanding signs for commercial uses in the CN district, we would allow, as used as permitted on appeal, electronic message centers and reader boards attached to freestanding signs, subject to several conditions. First condition would be that it would have to be located on a street of at least minor collector status. Second, no portion of the electronic message center or the sign could be closer than 50 feet to the nearest wall of the residential structure. The total sign face area for the freestanding side, sign and the electronic message center could not exceed 50 square feet. So for example, you could have 30 feet of regular signage and additional 20 square feet of electronic reader board. The message displayed would have to be static for a minute of six seconds, that's our standard for all reader boards in the city. And also, and this was the last thing added by the planning commission, the hours of operation for electronic message centers would be limited to 6 a.m., between 6 a.m. and 11 p.m. Finally, the sign regulations would be amended to require that freestanding signs in the CN district, that their construction materials would have to be compatible with the principal structure. These amendments have been approved by the planning commission or recommended by the planning department. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try and answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have our motion and a second, open up for discussion now. Any comments by the council?
What brought this on, what was the?
This is, was submitted by Walgreens, which is wanting to construct at the location of, at 10th and Washington back in June. And again, reader boards and electronic message centers on freestanding signs currently are not allowed in CN. Now, some of the properties that we have rezoned to CN do have them. There are a few signs, and I've got a couple of pictures to show you. But it was initiated by Walgreens, they asked for an amendment to allow them. That was denied with the understanding that the planning commission would study this and come back with an, with a alternative, and that's what's being presented tonight. Now, this is what was originally submitted. This is an example of one that's in a CN district. This is larger than would be allowed under this provision, but this is typically what the signs would look like. It has the architectural features that match the building, the only difference here is the size. And this is an existing one at Citizens Bank. Under the current provisions, for the new Citizens Bank, they would not be allowed to have either the time and temperature or the message board, reader board.
On a freestanding sign.
On a freestanding sign. And again, right now, you can place these type signs on the wall, up to 25% of the wall. And this, one of the amendments here would prohibit that, but would allow something similar to this.
To the point being it'd be less obtrusive to be on the, the freestanding sign as it would to be that big on the side of a wall, which would be more likely closer to a home and.
That's correct, that's correct.
Well, this is for, you know, the CN zoning too.
Yeah, this is only for the CN district.
Transitional zone between residential and commercial property.
So it wouldn't affect anything currently up?
No, they'd be grandfathered, whatever's there now would be grandfathered.
What's the total height requirement from the ground to the top?
It's 20 feet in the CN district.
20 feet, okay.
So that's a relatively short sign.
Sure, yeah, okay. And the electronic sign, whether it was just the time and date or whatever, the temperature, that would only run between 6 and 10, 11 a.m. I mean, 6 a.m. and 11 p.m.
6 a.m. to 11 p.m., yes ma'am. There was some debate about restricting colors. We had a couple of months' discussion on that, and it was felt, and also limiting the time, and it was felt that if we limited the time to basically from 6 a.m. to 11 p.m., there would be no need to restrict colors. They were worried about red and other colors flashing and bothering people that live nearby.
And the intensity of the lighting, is that?
That was discussed, and that's another reason why, one of the things was brought up, that the equipment to measure that, I believe was $11,000 to actually test that, and plus you'd have to have somebody available to do that, that'd have to be mostly done at night, so you'd probably have to have a police officer trained, or somebody like that, trained to be able to do that. But again, the opinion was that if it's, if they're turned off at 11 p.m., it shouldn't be that much of a problem for the areas. And again, the goal here is to try to have these uses coexist with having the least amount of impact on the residential properties.
I think we were trying to look at something that was a step in the right direction, and then we could reevaluate over time if it became an issue about things like you're talking about saying.
Okay. And the time shouldn't be a hindrance to the business, because they should be able to get like a timer, so that shouldn't be a costly, there should be a simple timer to turn that on and off.
Yes, we had a representative, one of the local sign companies come and talk to us about it, and he said they can, they can actually program the intensity and the time along with the messages they put on there.
And the only reason why we didn't do the timing, programming, as far as the intensity was, is because we just didn't have a way to enforce it.
No way to regulate it, right. I shouldn't want it to be a huge expense for the business after they've already spent a lot of money, but a timer shouldn't be that expensive, so.
Again, these would be new signs, so I think they could incorporate that when they order the, order the sign.
Okay.
The ones that are grandfathered in, then they don't have to turn those out at 11 o'clock?
I don't think they would, I think they'd be grandfathered in, cause this is adopted under the zoning code, and zoning can't be enforced retroactively.
Well, kinda like we did on fences, if they had to replace that, then it would fall under the new code?
Yeah, that would be a complete, if it's a complete replacement, they would.
Okay.
What zones does the, is scrolling, continuous scrolling of messages allowed? I know you're saying not, not in this one, but.
Well, they're not allowed in any zone.
In any zone?
No, and that goes back to the enforcement issue with the intensity.
Yeah, okay, I thought so.
We're having a hard time with that, we're having a hard time with the flashing, we go, you know, Jeff's Code's guys go and tell them, and they fix it right then, and the next day, I don't know if they just, the repairs don't work or what, but they, they're back to scrolling and flashing. It's difficult to enforce.
Yes.
Alright, very good. Do we have any other comments by the council? Any comments from the audience? Seen no further comments, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Item four, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading, ordinance 090816, rezoning 1200 Miracle Road and adjacent vacant lot, tax map number 66, parcels, are these parcels 73.05 and 73.06 from RS-15, single-family residential to CG, general commercial, sponsor James Mills.
Mayor and council members, this proposed rezoning was initiated by David Burnett on behalf of the River Community Church. The properties proposed for rezoning consist of approximately 23.25 acres combined. The rezoning also includes a portion of the roadway of Interstate 40. The church is currently located on parcel 7305 and has long-range plans for extending on to parcel 7306. The parcels are contiguous with RS-15 zoning to the north, south, and west, and with RS-15 and CG zoning to the east. Adequate utilities are available. Miracle Road, which provides access to the properties, is classified as a local street. Let me go back to the, this map, so you can see Miracle Road. The streets and utilities were constructed by the church as a part of the subdivision for the church in 2006. Miracle Road is a dead-end street extending approximately 2,000 feet off of Green Gate Lane. Green Gate Lane is also dead-end, has a length of approximately 1,800 feet, so there's about 4,000 feet of dead-end street. But a variance was granted by the planning commission at the time this subdivision was developed, the maximum length normally permitted is 1,200 feet. The petition indicated in the rezoning application that the properties will continue to be used for church purposes and for its future expansion. In discussion with the planning department, Mr. Burnett indicated that the current zoning limited the future plans for the church. The primary concerns included limitations on sanctuary size and size, size, sign size and height. Sorry, that's a little tongue twister there. These are the proposed expansion plans of the church. And again, this property is currently zoned RS-15, in which churches are allowed, but they must meet certain conditions. The first is, they must have a minimum acreage of two acres for the first 250 sanctuary seats, plus one additional acre for every additional 50 seats. So, at this site, based on 23 acres, the church could have a total sanctuary size of 1,300 seats. Their plans will exceed that. They've indicated they would like to have at least 1,500 seats. Churches are permitted in the CG district, but are not subject to these acreage requirements. The acreage requirements only apply to residential districts. Also, in the RS-15 district, church signs are limited to a maximum of 50 or 100 square feet, depending on street frontage, and in this case, they could have one of 100 square feet. In the CG district, they're allowed to have signs up to 250 square feet, so they can have a much larger sign in the CG district. Also, at this location, since they're within 750 feet of the interstate, they can have a sign up to a height of 100 feet, which is another thing they want to achieve, is to have a sign that's visible from the interstate. When this was reviewed by the planning commission, there was a lot of concern, or some concern, about access, adequate access to these properties if it's rezoned to CG. Concern was, if it's not used for church purposes, and this is developed commercially, it does not have adequate access. And under the RS-15, when this was approved by the planning commission, the subdivision, that wasn't a large concern, because very limited development could occur on RS-15 properties. Mr. Burnett has informed the planning department that the church's bylaws prohibit the properties from being used for any other purposes in the church or church-related uses. However, there are no deed restrictions on the property. Our land use plan shows these properties being best used for residential development, except for the eastern portion of the property, which is shown as potentially used for commercial development, if an access street is built off of Bunker Hill Road. The planning commission is currently in the process of updating our comprehensive plan and also our major street plan, and one of the proposed improvements in the major street plan is a connector road that would connect from Bunker Hill Road to Miracle Road. So you'd have a street, connecting street from Bunker Hill, Willow, Bunker Hill and Jefferson to Willow. If this is built, if that is what we end up doing, then this area would be, and it's projected, would be best suited for commercial purposes. It's true that under the current zoning, there are limitations on the ability of the church to expand. Again, both parcels were approved by the planning commission under a church subdivision, they're both owned by the church. And while there are no assurances that the properties will be utilized always for church purposes, based on the investment of the church, it is likely these properties will continue to be used for church purposes. And the proposed rezoning's been approved by the planning commission and is recommended by the planning department.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
Have our motion and a second, any discussion by the council? So can you go back to the site plan that shows the topography?
Yes.
It looks like their parking is built almost on a bluff there, I mean, that's pretty steep, those contours are pretty tight there.
These contours have been, been altered, this was taken from our GI system before they've done a lot of the.
Yeah, they're.
Site prep that they've done there now.
Okay.
And it does go up quite a bit through here, and that, that's not yet been leveled, would have to be if they ever do follow through with these plans.
And they'd end up having to have a big cut slope there.
Mm-hmm. Do you have an aerial of it, I'm sorry?
Um, do I?
And which side of the water tanks would the, the road that you're talking about, would it stay on the south side?
It would have to parallel the interstate. You're talking about an expensive project, it would have to run through here. This is, this is of course Pilot Knob, and you've got Hillsdale subdivision, but the plans that are shown on the comprehensive plan, the update of the major street planning, indicates the street would go through there.
Is that city?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is that city property?
A portion of it is, where the water tanks are, are city property.
But from the, from that water tank down to the interstate, is that city property?
No.
No?
Uh-uh. I think that the dotted white line is actually the interstate right of way.
It is, it is, that's interstate right of way.
And I think the, the property, you can see on the, the plaque, the water tank property doesn't go all the way there, we just haven't access to the water tank, I think that's owned by the.
This shows our city property right here.
Yeah, the Wright property, I think.
Yeah, the rest of it's owned by Jimmy Wright's family.
So why does the zoning extend out into the, oh, the interstate and into the median?
Well, zoning lines, when you ever break in the line, follow the center of the right of way, so you don't, that's just standard procedure, so, let me go back to the zoning map. So that's what's happened here, when we had a split.
Oh.
That's the same thing if it was a smaller street, and you've got zoning on one side or the other, it follows the center of the street. That's just a standard mapping procedure for it.
My only concern is that will it, will this continue to stay as church property in years to come, but we have no control over that, so I mean.
Well, that was a concern with the planning commission, but again, we felt like, or the planning commission felt like, and the planning department agreed, that considering the amount of investment that they've placed there.
Yeah.
And both parcels are owned by the church, and the growth that they've indicated, that it's likely that it'll stay away for quite a while.
Can you go back to the other?
To the site plan, or the aerial?
I can't imagine much residential, somebody wanting a house overlooking the interstate anyway, I mean.
The topography's pretty steep.
Well, and the, yeah.
To be able to get a, a road up to develop that property at an 8% grade or less, it'd be very difficult without having a winding road.
Yeah, the likelihood is that it wouldn't have.
Cause you can see how the, the road goes up to the water tank, you can see how it has to wind to come up to the water tank. Same would have to apply on the other side.
Where's their, where's the cross that's, where's it depicted on that?
Now, you see the cleared out area that goes up?
Right there?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
That's where the cross is, that you can see.
What about the parcel just to the west of this site that will be residential in between the CG and the LM?
This?
Mm-hmm.
Well, it's not owned by the church. And again, the concern here was, originally was, under RS-15, there's, there's quite a bit of control to keep having, traffic exceed the capacity of a dead-end street. And that's why again, it's felt like it would probably stay RS-15 until a connecting road is made. If it went commercial, I mean, that's, you're looking at 3,000 feet dead-end street to get to a commercial development, that was a concern. But again, it was felt like for these two tracks, that there was quite a bit of assurance it would stay used as a church.
Is there any, any way to, if, to, something about the road that if it became something other than that, that there would have to be on the property owner to fix the road to withstand that?
Well, the, the road itself is built, exceeds, or built, meets or exceeds our standards in terms of actual construction, in terms of pavement width, pavement depth, and gravel base. It's the access one-way and an-out was the concern with the planning commission. It's a well-built street. Isn't it, Greg?
Residential, just a local road.
Yeah, it's a local road, yeah. 20 feet wide.
Okay.
So I guess what Councilman Shelton's asking is, is if there are 1,500 persons back there, is that road sufficient?
Can it handle that?
To carry 1,500 or 500 cars?
I would think it is, but you're not talking about, this is not 1,500.
Daily.
Yeah, daily trips, you know, you've got, you'll max out on Sundays, and then the number will be reduced on Wednesdays, and I'm sure they have a lot of functions during the week, but you know, you're looking mostly at one day right now, that you're gonna have that number of cars there.
Well, just a question, what, did we, we didn't really talk about then, but after Councilman Shelton asked about this RS-15, is that, that LM zone there, that property's not used now, is it not? I mean, it's just sitting there vacant?
Well, it's still owned by the same group, and it is vacant, and there's been a lot of discussion with them about possibly rezoning that, and they've not submitted a formal request, and they've looked, they're, they're considering several different potential zones that they would want to request. And that is something we would look at, I believe, favorably, as some type of commercial zoning there at that location.
But if they did ask for some kind of rezoning on that property, it'd be, it would be very difficult not, for the properties not to be joined in, by CG?
Well, the LM property has frontage on Willow.
Okay, okay.
It's not, you know, this track's only frontage is on Miracle Road, but when this was subdivided, one of the conditions was for future subdivision, that a second route would have to be considered in and out for the future development of this. We had a proposal to do, to subdivide all up the side of the mountain. One of the conditions was, this is before the church acquired it, one of the, one of the conditions, or one of the stipulations was, you're gonna have to have another way in and out, and that way exceeds our maximum length. And they looked at different alternatives, one was trying to connect into Hillsdale, one was trying to connect through, in Honeybrook through here, and come across this property, none of that could be worked out. When talking about this property, it's potential that, you know, a second way could be placed into here that would reduce that. So there's other options that are available, potentially in the future for this, but not currently.
Any other discussion by the council? Do we have any comments from the audience? Seen no comments, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Item five, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading, ordinance 090817, annexation of Free Hill Road, North Washington Avenue area, and resolution 090811, adopting plan and services for the same, sponsor Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, this ordinance would annex and establish the zoning for certain properties consisting of approximately 90 acres. Again, as you stated, located north of the city's current corporate limits between Free Hill Road and North Washington. The proposed annexation was initiated following the receipt of individual requests for annexation from property owners in the area. Although additional requests for annexation north of this area have been received, the boundary of that area was restricted to include only the properties within the city's water service boundary. The area proposed for annexation is located entirely within the city of Coopel's urban growth boundary. The urban growth boundary was approved by the county and ratified by the state in 1999. It's the area in which the city is expected and authorized to annex over a 20-year period. Property owners in the proposed annexation area were notified by mail by the planning department prior to a public hearing held by the planning commission. They were also provided an information package on the proposed annexation. Here's an aerial view of the properties. And this is the land use and utilities. The area consists of 49 parcels in their entirety and a portion of one other. Located on 38 of these 50 parcels are 65 residential housing units, of which 56 are occupied. The estimated population of the area is 123 persons. There are approximately .53 miles of streets in the area, with approximately .37 miles of these streets being in less, being in less than good condition. At the present time, the proposed annexation area can be generally characterized as mixed density residential. It's been identified in the future land use plan as an area primarily suited, best suited for low-density and mixed-density residential development. The area has a limited amount of undeveloped land. Water service to the entire proposed annexation area is currently provided by the city of Coopel. Approximately $76,000 in improvements will be necessary to bring the area up to the same standards as in the current corp, limit, current corp limits. While city sewer lines are already located to a portion of the property, and they're reckoned, they're identified with these green manhole symbols, is located a portion of the property, the property owners aren't allowed to connect to the system because they're located outside the city. An estimated $380,000 in improvements will be necessary to provide public sewer service to the entire area. Natural gas is available to the area. Improvements costing approximately $11,400 will be necessary to serve the entire area. It's anticipated that electrical service will continue to be provided by Upper Cumberland, unless the co-op agrees to cede the area to the city of Coopel. Approximately 16 street lights will be installed in the area. Approximately sixteen street lights will be installed in the areas located within the five mile service boundary of the city's existing fire station located on North Washington Avenue. The plan of services, which is again is resolution R oh nine oh eight eleven for the proposed annexation area has been approved by the planning commission and provides as follows, and we are required to go through this. Police and fire protection, street maintenance, planning, zoning and inspection services will be provided upon the effective date of annexation. Property owners will have access, access to municipal recreational facilities upon the effective date of annexation. Refuge collection will begin within thirty days following the effective date of annexation. Water customers will have their water rates reduced to the inside rate within sixty days after annexation. Required water improvements will be completed within ten years following annexation. Sanitary sewer will be extended to the area within twenty-five years following annexation. Natural gas customers will have their rates reduced to the inside rate within sixty days after annexation. Natural gas will be extended to the unserved portions of the area based on customer demand and when economically feasible. Electric service will continue to be provided by Upper Cumberland. Street lighting will be provided by the city within one year following the effective date of annexation. Residents of the area proposed for annexation would receive numerous benefits as a result of annexation. These include improved police and fire protection, reduction of ISO fire insurance ratings from class nine to class two, which can result in a savings on homeowners insurance up to twenty percent, reduction of water rates by over thirty percent, zoning protection, street lighting, weekly garbage pickup. Natural gas customers would receive the inside rate, which again is twenty-five percent less than the outside rate. Of course, property owners would be required to pay city property tax. The current city property tax rate is eighty-seven cents per a hundred dollars of assessed value. Based on the current tax appraisals for the area, the average annual city property tax for a homeowner in the area would be one hundred and forty-nine dollars and ten cents. Should this area be annexed in two thousand nine, property owners would not be required to say, to pay city property tax until two thousand ten. The estimated annual revenue to the city from property and state shared taxes is twenty-one thousand seven hundred dollars. The first year expense from the city's general fund is estimated at sixteen thousand six hundred dollars, which includes a one-time expense for the purchase of garbage canisters and the provision of street lighting. This map depicts the proposed zoning that's recommended in the planning services. The proposed annexation with the establishment of RS twenty zoning and CL local commercial zoning and the planning services have been approved by the planning commission and are recommended by the planning department.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Do we have a motion in a second?
No approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Discussion by the council. Did you say the total revenue to the city is twenty-one thousand seven hundred dollars?
Annual, annual revenue, yes. From, from property tax and from state shared tax. That doesn't include utility fees or anything like that. Just property tax and uh state shared taxes.
Twenty-one thousand what?
Seven hundred.
And what was the total amount to do utilities there?
Sewer was three hundred and eighty thousand, uh water was seventy-four thousand, and gas was eleven thousand four hundred.
What was the, why, why else to be looking at this for annexation? What was the, what catalyst for getting us to?
Well, originally, um it was based on requests. We've received requests in there for over two years and again, we've looked at an area north of this. Let me go back to the larger. We've had several requests in this area in here. Um this, the main reasons, this area is basically surrounded by the city. Free Hill Road, North Washington Avenue are both already in the city. We patrol this area. One of the comments uh was made by one of the residents out there that the police, city police already patrol this area. They're already going down Shilt Cemetery Road. So we're already providing basically police and fire protection um to the area. And again, it's um surrounded and the other, other main reason is because we did receive requests for annexation.
Would any of these um pieces of um property be eligible for green belt?
You're over fifteen acres and farm your property have a, to show that you produce farm revenue, then you're eligible to be green belted.
So you produce farm re-
You have to have a certain amount of income. From farm.
Do we have a cost on street lighting?
Yes, um-
Sixteen six?
No, that's, the sixteen six is the cost for everything except for utilities. What are general fund? The property tax, the reason why I've broken that down, the twenty-one seven is, goes to the general fund. Um and the services that are, that we would um be spending are sixteen six and that includes again, the one-time expense for the garbage, which is um thirty-two five. The cost for street lighting, um the annual cost for street lighting is two thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. And that's included in that sixteen six.
What'd you just say before that thirty-two thousand five hundred, what, what is that for?
Three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Three thou- did I say thirty-two? Three thousand two hundred and fifty is a one-time expense for the garbage canisters.
Okay.
That's in that sixteen six.
Okay.
And that twenty-one seven, again, those, that, the property tax and the state shared taxes go to the general. Um comparing that to the sixteen six, the first year, the second year you wouldn't have the thirty-two five, three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars in there. So basically, you're looking at the cost for police, fire, um garbage pickup, planning, zoning, recreation, all but utilities. But it does include the street lighting costs because we'll have to pay Upper Cumberland um for the street lighting and that's paid from the general fund, correct, Mr. Schible?
That's correct.
Not through the electric department.
Since they're retaining the customers, why, why would we pay for the street lighting? I'm just a- This is the first annexation we've done.
Yeah, it is.
We're required to provide street lighting in our-
Yeah, street lighting is a service.
They're not required to provide street lighting.
No.
Any um, any thought about how fast you could upgrade a couple of these streets, which uh I think was listed in, not, not in good condition? Would that, would that be very expensive to upgrade those streets and how soon could that be done?
Well, I can give you the estimate that was submitted by the uh-
Excuse me.
I think it was fif- Yeah, the cost for resurancing the, and again, uh there's only, um, there's less than four tenths of a miles of street. And it's Shilt Cemetery and the, the other little dead end street are the only streets that we'd be accepting that we don't already maintain. And it's fifteen thousand dollars. So that's whenever, I mean, you have to schedule that whenever feasible.
Did you say we're, we're maintaining roads outside the city right now?
No, they're inside the city. We, it's basically we, uh the, the roads in on one side is inside the city, the other side's outside the city, but the actual road is inside the city. And that's Free Hill Road, which runs, parallels the western side of this. Washington, of course, is a state road, but it is a city street up to three-fourths of this.
I'm just trying to, to get a business, my business mind wrapped around spending a half million dollars essentially, uh over a half million dollars and bringing in twenty-one thousand seven hundred dollars a year. I mean, it would take way over twenty-five years. Am I, am I thinking-
The twenty-one seven wouldn't be applied to the utilities. I mean, they're, you know, that's the-
I know, but if you net, net out, I mean, it's all, it's all in a pot and it comes back out. All I'm saying is, I'm just trying to, am I missing something or?
No, and uh, you know, it's, you hear actors, you know, you, you'll hear, uh, and we've heard many times that you're only annexing this to bring in money. You don't bring in money by annexing. What you're looking at here is future development, uh what could happen in the future, if that would offset the cost that uh the city would incur. Again, the sewers, it's even in the planning services, many years down the road in the planning services, um the water's within ten years. So the goal would be that you'd be able to control what happens and you'd have areas for future development. But no, you're, you're correct, uh, Councilman Shelton. It's not a, it's not a money-making thing.
It's not a money-making thing, but it's progress for the city. And it's-
Well, it's a, I think the main thing in my mind is it, it's just a hole in the, I mean, it just makes sense to, as far as where the city limits is. I mean, it's, and it, there's no annexation that makes money. They all, they're all expensive.
Well, and it just, I guess my concern kind of goes along with Ricky is that, I mean, under the current economic conditions we're having, I mean, with our sales tax collections down, uh I mean, the large percentage of our budget being based upon that rather than property tax necessarily, I mean, what are we gonna gain, I guess? I mean, I, I hear the future, you know, land use-
Well, I mean, if you look at the numbers purely about, when you're talking about sales tax and property tax, again, that's the general fund. If you compare that to the revenue, then we come out about, about even on this. Twenty-one thousand seven hundred in revenue, sixteen six, first year in expense. That's not utilities. Cause they're not part of the property tax or the uh sales tax revenue.
What is the response been from the residents or owners of the property?
There's several people opposed and I'm sure that they'll wanna speak tonight.
Okay. But what about the people for? I mean, have you-
Have-
I mean, folks that might be in support of this? What reasons have they given that they want to be?
The primary goal's for sewer and for the zoning protection. That's, the sewer's the number one request.
That, that's the big one out there, zoning protection. Well, that's true.
Are they having septic failures or something in that area?
Oh, this is for development. And again, that's, you know, the-
You're about for denser development or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, what you would, yes, that's why you would need sewers for higher density development. That's the requests, uh the two requests. Two of the requests were for specifically sewer.
Are any of those properties or the, that are being talked about, have they been secured or optioned so that, I mean, I'm just curious?
They're owned by the person requesting-
So it's the owner's request, okay.
Yes.
All right.
Well, I think the interesting part is, is that you can look at the zoning here. Any properties that face Washington are gonna be zoned CL. Any of the properties that are zoned RS twenty, uh currently, they would have to, without sewer, they would have to have a PERC test and that'd be minimum lot size would be RS twenty. But on, to the west of that, you've got RS fifteen, which is in sewer, so they could, it, it would make relatively uh normal sense for someone to ask for an RS fifteen zoning, but they couldn't get that in order to do future development uh because it has no sewer and you can't, you can't have a greater density. And so, one of the goals of the planning commission is, and uh, is to annex property that is not currently developed so that when it is developed, it's developed in such a manner that we don't have to go in and pay three times the rate to go in and water and sewer properties so that uh after they're already developed. Cause some of the properties we've, you know, we've annexed in, in the last few years, they're brand new subdivisions and we've annexed those properties at, at little to no cost to us, but in the future, we're gonna have to go in and put sewer to all these properties. And so that's when it's a lot, a lot more cost pro- prohibited than it would be before it's developed. So I think that's one of the things as the planning commission looks at it. As well as logistically, our, our police department is currently uh only patrolling half, you know, half a, half the property on one side of this, this road at Free Hill. They can only, i- if called, they can, you know, obviously, the police department's gonna help if they can, but uh legally-
We've already responded to, to a fire, our fire department has.
Legally, we have to respond, but we're, we're not really covered, if you will, because it's, we only own, we only patrol the west side of that road.
Well, I'm sure we've got mutual aid agreement, which probably, I don't know if, yeah, Ken, excuse me, I, I mean, I'm assuming we are covered because we have that mutual aid agreement. I'm not sure.
Yeah, we're covered, yeah.
Well, I mean, I don't, I don't know that that's an, an issue, but, and I'd be curious too, like further south in this zoning, you've got the RS fifteen. I know there's a subdivision down there.
Uh-huh.
Uh, you know, particularly, a- as I know, Mr. Mills, you've experienced the traffic coming out of the high school there. Is that an area really where you want commercial right across the entrance from a school that could create more traffic as opposed to, to something else? I don't know that there's, are there any commercial-
It can go there now. I mean, there's no-
Right.
Well, we've already, the, the one track is just immediately that you're referring to right here. There's already a set of apartments located, two sets of apartments on this property.
What's that?
There's already two sets of apartments located on this property, which again is part, a portion would, we're recommending for CL. Um, there's been redevelopment, there are two new duplex units that have been built here. These are the two newest structures located in here. But you're gonna get even more development uh that's currently inside the city, proposals for apartments in that area, so there's gonna be continued traffic.
I'm not gonna say zoning is the big issue.
But again, I don't know that that area along Washington would be appropriate for single family. Now, it's again, looking long range, the CL zone is probably the most appropriate zone for the area.
Well, we did see in on North Washington, you know, further south of there, so I mean, could that be an option? I guess it could.
It could be an option.
Well, do we have anybody in the audience that has any comments or concerns? Yes, sir. If you'd just come to the lectern, uh we typically give people up to three minutes to speak and if you could just identify yourself, your name and-
My name's Ellen Hannah and our family owns this farm right here and these tracks right here and that track right there. It's part of our old family farm. That land was originally settled by our family. We still use it for agricultural purposes. We grow vegetables, which we sell at the local farmer's market. Typically, we have some cattle thing out in this back field. Whether I can meet your green belt requirements, I don't know. But I do know that we don't want to be in the city. Now, we had a list which we gave the planning commission before and every resident we've talked out to out there, none of them are interested in this. We don't want to be included in the city because most of the people like being out in the country. Now, I'd love to see the list of people that were requesting this to be zoned because I certainly are included in the city, but I certainly can't find anybody who wants this annexation. And I know from a point of view, from us farming the land, if you got a deer going through your beans, you kill it. Well, in your city, you can't shoot a gun. Boy, you get in trouble over that. It is gonna do nothing but create problems for us to continue to do what our family has done out there since the day this land was settled. And I am dead set against it.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Yes, sir.
It's just a part of his track to be an annexed.
I'm Harold Loftus and uh me and my sister are on this up track up there with the probably, probably the largest landowners in the whole thing individually. And it's used as farm. Now, there's twelve and a half acres here and that will not meet green belt requirements. But we, me and the family owns the land north and I'd like to ask him who requested to be annexed out north. Because my family did and we own, we own this, a land that's north here.
Cause I, I'm sorry, well, when I said north, I meant this Dell Lane, this subdivision in here. This is where we've got the request, not up in here, I'm sorry, but this is there, this is the area we've received quest. Matter of fact, we had a call this week asking about it, but uh not, I didn't mean north of uh Whittaker Springs, this area in here.
That's not what you said. You said north.
Well, that is north of this area right there.
So, we, we are against it because there's nothing that the city can offer us, you know. And what was the average tax you've gone charges?
One forty-one.
Forty-nine dollars?
Hundred and forty-one, yeah.
Okay.
Now, yours is quite a bit more than that.
If you take it in, that my taxes would be no more than a hundred and forty-nine dollars?
That was average. Best, uh, and his is quite a bit more than that.
Answer me.
No, he, that's why he was giving you an average. An average is consists of a high number and a low number.
I'm interested in average. I'm interested in this property.
I can tell you it'd be about one-third of what your county taxes are.
Okay. Then I get nothing or me and my sister gets nothing for six or seven hundred dollars.
Yours is uh four fifty-five twenty-three.
Okay, what did I get for that? Nothing?
Four fifty-five twenty-three is yours, sir.
Well, sir-
Why should I be interested in being tech- uh, of course, I'm a farmer and I'm not interested, don't wanna be, first place. But, then shouldn't be. I'm in green belt. But if you're just gonna, if you're gonna say I, I've gotta have fifteen acres within the city, but then that kicks me out. No telling what the taxes would be worth then, you see.
If you're already in the green belt, you would remain in the green belt. You don't have to qualify again for green belt. If you're already qualified as green belt, then you would continue to qualify as green belt.
Okay. Okay, for this, what's my sister's taxes?
Is that Mary Frances?
Yeah, Mary Frances.
Two forty-eight thirty-nine. Two forty-eight thirty-nine.
So we're talking about six, between six and seven hundred dollars. And we get nothing.
Sir, I think, I think uh one of the questions that we do in the annexation that we try to answer is uh does your, your sister Mary Frances, does she own a home on her property? Cause I know on this one, I don't, I don't see a residential property, but-
Yeah, there is. Whose house is located on this property.
Do you current, did you check your um insur- homeowner's insurance policy?
And he said there would be basically no change.
Really? The ISO rating changing from a nine to a two wouldn't help you?
Well, I have insurance with State Farm and I did call them and they told me that basically no change.
Okay.
I have a water hydrant in my front yard.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know what's happening there.
Typically...
So, it doesn't make any sense for us.
Typically, we see a dramatic savings. I, I know for some properties south of Cookeville, when the annexation occurred, there had dramatic savings.
Yeah.
As it related from the ISO rating.
This is not, though. This is not. I mean, you, tell me, tell me if there is.
Well, I, I don't have your insurance policy, and I'm not an insurance agent. You just asked, you, you made the que, you made the comment of, is the, what is there to gain for you? And I'm saying is, is normally, that's a gain for you. You have a reduction in your water bill, because you currently would be paying more for your water bill. You would get police and fire protection for your property.
Free garbage pickup.
You'd get, you'd get garbage pickup for that property. And so, there are some benefits to being in the city. Now, they might not be of value to you. Do you see what I'm saying? But there are, there are values to being in the city.
Well, I have one piece of property in the city, and that's fine. It's okay.
Yeah. And if you ever had a tree that went down, and you drug it out to the street, we'd come get it for you instead of you having to take it somewhere.
How long would that take? Let me ask you that.
Right.
Well, actually, they did that pretty clear.
Depends on how many storms.
So, that's not worth a lot either.
It was valuable to me.
Well, this gentleman here talks about filling in a gap. What gap does that fill in right there for the city? I've been told that's one of the reasons they wanted to annex it, is to fill in a gap. Does that fill in a gap?
Let me go back, and you can sit better on this.
Well, and I think, I mean, there's a lot of gaps in the, in the city limits. I mean, it's not just a smooth border to our city limits, and this one is pretty dramatic, as far as the, you know, it creates almost like a tooth knocked out there. It's...
Yeah, if you've got to fill in a gap, you go right down, all the way down Dale Lane, all the way across.
Well, that's the area we originally looked at, and it was scaled back to follow the water service boundary. This is the end of, and that's why the one parcel, I think the Hannah parcel split. That's actually where our water service district.
Let me, let me ask this. If the, if the, if the request came from Dale Lane area, then why aren't we including Dale Lane area?
The last request, the most current request we received, which you all have copies through emails, is from the Schultz family on, on Washington. The original request, we've had other requests in the Dale Lane area. The reason why we didn't do Dale Lane, we submitted this to all the department heads to review, and it was determined that we should not go past the water service boundary, and that's why, that's why it is. The original study that we led, we've been looking at this for a couple of years. The original study had all of the Dale Lane area in, and we'd been receiving requests for many years for annexation in that area. But it was determined not to look at that because it was outside the water service boundary. It's not an area, I mean, it's an area that's well within our urban growth boundary. I'll go back to the area of you, this dotted line, the red dotted line is urban growth boundary. The area which the state says, we've got the right to annex if we deem it feasible to annex.
Well, I can certainly see, I mean, it, it, to me, it, it is within our growth boundary, and I do agree with, with Ryan and Vice Mayor Davis. I mean, there are benefits. I know my family's farm was annexed in twenty-something years ago, probably, and didn't make a lot of sense at first, but particularly as my grandmother got older and needed medical services, man, the, the fire department had about a three-minute response, and there's definitely value in that. My concern is that at this time, those benefits come at an expense to the rest of the citizens of Cookeville, and, you know, I'm just not sure that it's, you know, the right time for the city of Cookeville to be expanding its boundaries when we are faced with kind of uncertain economic times. But we appreciate your comments, sir. Thank you for, for coming. Do we have any additional comments from the audience?
Let me say one other thing about the insurance while she comes up. And what we've typically found, in situations like this, where people are right on the edge of the city, the insurance companies typically already given them the rate reduction. We've found that in many occasions.
Yes, sir. If you could just identify yourself.
I'm Debbie Hanna, of course.
Let me go to the other.
Yeah, go to the other.
Oh, and then let me go forward. This track right here, isn't it?
That track and this little one right here. Schultz on, on this one right here next to us. But my concern is, is these poor folks right here. They own their property. They own their mobile homes, and as good a fire department as we have, you know, you've got to be right there when the fire starts for a mobile home. If their mobile home were to burn, even with the fire department as good as it is getting there, you had to find it before you put it out, and so usually, a mobile home is gone. Any way you cut it, it's gone. Those people are going to end up being homeless, because you can't put a mobile home back in Cookeville. So, you know, it's against the law in Cookeville to, you know, they're grandfathered in right now. If they burn, those people are homeless. This is not a trailer park. These are people owning their own trailers, their own property, and that's something that nobody, nobody's even talked about. And, you know, sewer service is here. Why I say, I don't care, but up here, it's, it's foolish. It's foolish, and especially dividing our farm. We are green-belted, and, and do, my cousins here, they, I let them run cattle over there, and they're in a lawsuit right now, so they can't say one way or the other how they feel. Personally, they told me we're against it, but they have to tell you that. But that's, and streetlights? No, we don't have any streetlights. We go out there at night with our telescope, and we get to see the stars, you know, unlike at the house where, you know, for a month and a half, our streetlight was gone, and it was great. I didn't have to haul the telescope out to the farm, but then they came and fixed the streetlight. So, you know, I'm not real for streetlights. Another thing, my grandfather was a gunsmith, and we fixed up a place out there to sight in guns and stuff, and, and we're interested in continuing that as a hobby. And once you're in the city limits, we can no longer sight in our guns or anything. We might could go out, bend of the river and stuff, but we could do that now, and you're taking that away from us. And, I mean, it's a safe place to do that now. And, but, you know, it's just totally against the law in Cookeville.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any additional comments? Can I ask a question? I want to ask a question while she's coming up. Okay, explain one more time to me about the water situation, why it wasn't, I mean, it looks like to me it would have followed Free Hill Road, or it would have followed the current and come in right behind and go up Dale Lane. Explain to me the water situation, why it wasn't considered...
That's the agreed upon, and I'll let Ronnie probably speak to it better than I can. That's the agreed boundary between the city of Cookeville, and I think that's, is that Bangham Utility District? That's what the official boundary is between the utility districts, and we, we can't serve water in their utility district without their permission.
But could, but we could have, we could annex it, and they continue to serve just like the electric, right?
Sure, they sure could.
So, I mean, I don't, I don't understand, if we're looking at doing it, why you wouldn't really close up holes. If you're going to close up the hole, close, close the hole up. Go all the way up and take, and especially take in the one that had requested it. I, I just, it doesn't really make sense to me.
Well, the other issue there is when you get sewer, you know, you, you'll, you don't read the meters. Bangham would read the meters, and we've got a few cases, like, it could be done, Councilman Shelton. Now, you know, that was the decision that was made by, when this was reviewed.
Sorry, go ahead. I want to try and take your time.
No, that's all right. That's all right. Again, yeah, same property, they're, they're family. My name's Donna Haynes. You know, I've been hearing it doesn't make any business sense for the city of Cookeville. We're hearing, you know, these folks with the trailer up here, these are trailers, that's a trailer, those are trailers, that one might be a trailer.
All the green are trailers.
That's a trailer, pardon?
All the green are, represent mobile homes. The green...
Then you've missed, there's, there's one in the back there, I think. One, there's one more trailer here. Those, this, like she said, all those people are just out of luck, you know. If anything happens to the trailer that requires it to be replaced, not just fire, but anything happens to it. Many of the properties are too small for an RS twenty, I think. I will look that up, and I will know for sure next time I come. So, how, how does it make sense, your zoning? And I'm hearing right now that a big reason for doing this is to make the boundary of Cookeville look nice and neat? That's no reason at all. That, that just blows me away. So many of us are against this on, on practical reasons. It doesn't help our insurance. It, it's, it's not going to be beneficial to very many of us, and it will be very detrimental to some of us. And it's just to make the boundary look nice and neat? Don't say it. I don't get it. I don't understand it. I don't want it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think the boundary looking nice and neat is the reason. The, one of the, because we've already owned both sides of this. The streets are inside the city of Cookeville. Free Hill Road, the entire length of this area that's been annexed is already inside the city. We maintain that. We pave that. We upgrade that. The residents that are off of that, that live outside of this, that's how they access their property. So, one side's in, one side's out. Washington, of course, is a state road. It's inside the city, we don't maintain it. But Free Hill, the entire length is already inside the city. And that's, when we talk about donut holes, and we're serving it, the police drive up and down Free Hill. So, they're serving this area across the street. Same people on the other side of the street are outside. Same thing on Washington. Police drive up and down. Same thing with the fire. They're, we're patrolling these areas. Garbage, same thing. Our garbage truck's going up and down Free Hill. We're picking it up on one side. And that's what we meant by a hole and closing in a gap.
Regarding the, the mobile homes, if something were to happen to them that was catastrophic, would those property owners be grandfathered in, or would they then, if something were to happen to their mobile home that they would have to replace or...
Wind or fire.
All right, they're, all right. But they are correct. By not, by our zoning code, mobile homes on individual lots are prohibited. They'd be grandfathered in as non-conforming uses. However, by state law, they're not protected by commercial or industrial uses. So, they're not, they don't have non-conforming use status. So, they're, on a, they cannot be replaced with a single-wide mobile home. They can be replaced with double-wide mobile homes. However, they can apply for a variance from hardship, and we've allowed some replacement of mobile homes, but very, very rarely. But that's true, the purpose, one of the provisions of the code is that they're not allowed in the city unless within mobile home parks with the goal of, of transitioning them out of single-wide mobile homes on individual lots.
Please don't take it wrong that I don't see the, the long-term planning part of this being beneficial. But to me, it just seems like we're almost putting the cart before the horse, that we have needs in our existing boundaries that should take priority prior to us investing this kind of money and energy into this portion of the city. I mean, not that it's not worthy of, I mean, you know, it's, I mean, it clearly makes sense, and I, I would have to say I would be in agreement with Councilman Shelton. Instead of just doing this little portion, let's look at, you know, maybe there's more area that would make it more beneficial to us as far as tax collections.
Yeah, I mean, that, I, I guess that's kind of, again, it, it seems like, and I understand about the, the donut hole and as far as the services, I think that was probably a miscommunication is why. It's more, not necessarily aesthetics of closing holes as much as it is service-wise. You're already servicing some areas, and certainly, I, I think this council over the past three years and even hours before has always looked at long-term growth and, you know, planning for the future, and, and this certainly has that as well. But, you know, it is tough economic times, and it, from a strictly business point, certainly now, and maybe, maybe twenty-five years from now, or twenty years from now, it would, but right now, it doesn't make business sense to me at all to commit the kind of money that we're talking about committing in the future, just, just to do the utilities, over a half million dollars, that, that somebody, that we're going to have to pay for one day if we're making the commitment now. We're experiencing that in this other area we talked about not long ago about water rates. So, I don't know, I just have, you know, if I was going to do it, I feel like we're still piecemealing it. If we were going to look at it, I think we should look at, at, at that whole top area up there, if you're really going to, you know, because Free Hill Road runs out through there, and we've still got a parcel, you know, Free Hill Road, I guess splits Mr. Hanna's property there. It looks like to me, I mean, you would include all that if you're going to do it, if we're really going to protect their future land use as far as what that might be one day, if they want to develop it or whatever. It would just make sense to me, so I, I just...
I understand what you're saying, but if, if you're looking at it purely financially, if you look at a larger area, you're going to have even larger gap in terms of what you're bringing in and what you're spending. I mean, you're probably double, triple sewer calls.
I understand that.
And you're not bringing much from property tax.
Well, we were in a far different economic place, you know, in the past five, four, five years, too, as, as far as commitments.
And what about, what about the, I mean, the city goes up to, you talk about Free Hill Road. What about Whittaker Springs Road? Do we already, do we take care of that, or is that a county road?
That's county.
That's county.
So, why, when we took in this, the area west of Free Hill, why us to take the road rather than just come up to the road?
Prior to me, I don't know why.
Well, one of the things that I've been thinking about as we've been discussing this and looking at this, and when I make this comment, this is not aimed at anybody, but I think about the residents of Cookeville who are in the west of Free Hill. They have zoning and codes that they can apply to, and if there's a problem with a neighbor, they can say, you know, call Mr. Littrell and, and those kind of situations. And I'm thinking about the people that, you know, are on the west side of Free Hill, then those areas in between Washington and Free Hill are county, which, of course, the county doesn't have the zoning that the city has. And, you know, it's a, it's definitely a difficult decision, and then I look at that sewer running right through the county part, and those folks can't tie in. So, I'm just thinking out loud here that there's certainly pros and cons to both sides of this. You know, I mean, if I lived...
The protection.
Yeah, if I lived on, on any part of the city, and not so much Washington because of what's to the east of Washington, but if you lived on Free Hill Road and the property directly across the street from you was in disrepair or whatever, and I'm not saying that any of those properties are, but it could happen, then you have no recourse as a city taxpayer.
Well, you know, it's, it's issues like this that makes the job for people like us to, to make, because there are pros and cons to this, like there are other issues that we face from time to time, and this is one of the harder ones. And so, the way I have to look at it is, what is best for the whole? What is best for the future? And thinking that things, things would be just more expensive as we go along. So, if the planning commission and the staff has worked on this for two years, then I feel like there's got to be some positive about including these people in the city, that, that in time, that hopefully, that they can see, and that they are coming out to have some amenities that will be useful and helpful for them. And I, I just feel like that it's, it's better to do it at this time than to put it off any longer, because there's, it's been worked on for two years. And certainly, I wish we could please everybody, but we cannot please everybody. So, I have to look at it as what is best for the entire situation as opposed to one or two, well, I'm saying, they're saying there's more than one or two, but as to the few. So, I, I feel like I'm just going to have to vote for annexing this, this portion because of what I've studied through this, and certainly, I've studied it. In fact, I went to see Mr. Mills to have him sit down and have him go over with me so I could, and I ask a lot of these questions of him, it's just like we're asking and talking about tonight. So, I think I'm going to have to, although it's a difficult decision.
Yep.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, definitely.
Do we have any additional comments by the council or any comments from the audience? Yes, sir.
Were any of you all in the council when the corridor J thing was going?
Three of, three of the five were.
Three of the five? Okay. Gene talked about what's better for the county and the community. Well, three of the five, whoever's in charge, that that thing died. And that's the best thing that could ever happen to Cookville and Putnam County, is to have corridor J come around to where you want to.
I was for it.
It wasn't our fault it died. I can assure you of that.
Anything to go nowhere. Where you sit on your rear ends and didn't do anything out here when you had a chance to get corridor J.
We did, we tried.
We didn't sit on our rear end. I was in Nashville and so was the, both, we tried to get the corridor J.
Maybe that's the reason, the other guys are gone.
I can't speak to that, but I know there was an attempt.
We do have term limits in the city of Cookville.
But, if you really wanted something for the county in Cookville, you would've got-
We'd have done something for the region, we'd have had something for the region.
See, now, that would be a benefit to you to be in the city, is you could run for city council.
No, I know, but one of it, yeah, I know that one, our choice.
Alright, seen no further comments, I'll vote.
Three yes votes, two no. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills.
Thank you.
Item six, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance 090918, amending the budgets for the various funds departments of the city of Cookville for the fiscal year ending June the 30th, 2009. Sponsor, Mr. Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, this ordinance will amend the budgets for five of the funds within the city for June 30th, 2009. I'll be brief as I can with my comments. Stop me at any time, ask me any questions, I'll try to answer those. Within the general fund, we have additional $625,000 in revenue. A lot of that is grant revenue to recognize. In terms of expenses, we had $499,557,000 worth of expenses. Majority of those are grant expenses related to, we purchased a fire truck through some homeland security grant funding. We also have some other grants for the police department, I think that helped with some overtime issues there, and they had received a grant that assisted with that. If you recall, a lot of these items you've approved individually throughout the year, such as the fire trucks and those situations. If you recall back in the summer, we built the rehabilitation center for, and we had, ran into a spring that they hit out there, we had to buy some, or do some extra work for rock. That's in here also, that amendment. We also have a write-off on a receivable that we've been carrying on the books for a while related to the hospital, and one also for the Chamber of Commerce. And that $50,000 write-off would be considered a contribution to their Highlands Initiative. So, those items are in the general fund budget. We will have a fund balance at the end of, or at June 30th, 2009 of $6 million in the general funds. We have a healthy fund balance with the general fund. Moving along to state street aid for decreasing, or increasing the revenue there of $69,000 and decreasing what we'd originally budgeted for expenditures of $27,000. That one's a little confusing when you look at, if you go back to the original budget, we had planned on in state street aid of decreasing that fund balance $200,000. Because of these changes, instead of decreasing it $200,000, we're actually only decreasing it $56,000 in the state street aid fund. The drug fund, we had some additional revenue there related to confiscations, and we had some expenses of, or additional revenue $27,200, other expenses there of $20,000. Those expenses relate, were, was a used vehicle for the police department and also some K-9, K-9s, I believe. And the economic development fund, we have additional $176,000 in revenue and additional $260,000 in expenses, which is, those $260,000 is all related to the Highlands Business Park and the engineering design fees out there for that part. At the end of the year, we have a $330,000 fund balance in our economic development fund. And the last amendment I have for you to consider is the employee insurance fund. We have an additional $510,000 in expenses there. And, one slide behind there. We had a health claims, $500,000 of that, $510 is health claims. Again, we have a healthy fund balance in a health insurance fund, it's $4.6 million. We originally had a excess of revenues in that fund of about $485,000. So, what we're actually doing this, this past fiscal year is eating into our health insurance fund balance by $15,000. But, I'd recommend your approval.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion by the council? Comments from the audience? Seen none, I'll vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Davidson. Item seven, consider approval of purchase of used fitness equipment with a 90% funding by grant from the fire department, Chief John Kendrick.
Mayor and council, what I have for you tonight is a request for purchase for six used treadmills for the fire stations. 90% of this funding is covered by the fire grant, which is what we received earlier this year, and this portion is being carried over from last year to cover that.
Alright, very good.
I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Do we have a motion and a second to approve? So move.
Second.
We have our motion and a second, any discussion by the council? Seen no discussion, I'll vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Chief. Item eight, consider awarding bids, consider awarding the following bids. Item 8A, vehicle servicing. Sponsor, Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, we annually take bids for servicing on our vehicles. And we opened those bids back in the middle of August, and we'd recommend that the bid be awarded to Clean Care Auto Care, the lowest bid meeting specs. Express Louvre had a bid of $21.99, and Clean Care was $19.25. I'd point out that we had a bid from MRS Group of $14.99. They didn't meet the entire specs that we asked for, which was the entire inspection of the vehicle, hoses, topping off any of the fluids, transmission fluid, brake fluids, those type of things. Their bid did not include the additional six quarts of oil that some of our vehicles require. So, we'd recommend awarding the bid to Clean Care Auto Care.
Do we have a motion second?
Move approval.
Have our motion second, any discussion by the council? How many, how many do we do a year?
How many, oil changes?
Yeah.
Off the top of my head, I do not know that, I can find that out for you.
I'm curious.
I think some of the departments handle those. I know, I'm pretty certain the electric department handles theirs in-house. Gas department, you know, we have those vehicles changed a couple of times a year. Other than that, I'm not sure about the other departments.
Any other discussion by the council? Seen no discussion, I'll vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Item 8B, new knuckle boom truck, Public Works Department, sponsor, Mr. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, we recently opened bids for a new knuckle boom truck. Best evaluated bid that we think would serve us best is a 2010 international truck from CMI Equipment for $101,926. I'd recommend your approval.
Alright, do we have a motion and a second to approve?
So move. Second.
Our motion is second, any discussion by the council? What exactly is this for?
It's a brush truck.
Oh, again, like we talked about way back when, have you checked any places that possibly?
As much wire as they get, no, we've, we've not checked for any used equipment at all on that, no.
Are we out of a truck right now?
Well, none of them is down, yes, we have one running right now.
Had some requests for you.
Yes.
Are we in a, yeah, I had one of those this week too. Are we, are we choosing an international, because that's what we currently have on all the other ones?
We have not necessarily a brush truck, some of the other trucks we have recently bought were international, and we like those better than the rest of them. That's why we're trying to stick with international, we've had better luck with those than the rest of them.
Okay.
Alright, do we have any additional? Standard warranty come with this?
Yes, I think it's 24 months.
Okay, does it have to be built or is it already something that's built?
It's a 90 to 120 days, they chassis it in, they'll have to put the back on it, yes.
Any further discussion by the council? Seen none, I'll vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Mr. Brown. Item 8C, a new cab chassis and digger derrick body, transformers and cable, electric department, sponsor, Tony Peake.
Mayor and council, you should have three bad bid tabulation sheets in front of you. The first is for the 2010 year model cabin chassis. This is for one of our digger dericks that we set poles and change out transformers and those kind of things with. On the, item one, the cabin chassis, recommend Tri-State as a low bidder at $76,107, meeting specifications. On the digger derrick body, item two, recommend Terex Utilities as a low bidder meeting specs on that. And I might point out that the truck that this is replacing is a 1994 cabin chassis. Boom's a little bit older than that. And what our plans are is maybe in the future budget, buying a new cabin chassis and having this old derrick truck refurbished, seems to be working good. Has for us and some other folks. On the second bid tabulation sheet, it is for overhead transformers, recommend power supply as the low evaluated bidder meeting specifications. And on the third tabulation sheet for underground primary cable, recommend Wesco as the low bidder meeting specs. Recommend your approval.
Alright, do we have a motion and a second to approve?
Move approval. Second.
Have our motion second, any discussion by the council? Seen no discussion, I'll vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Peake. Item nine, consider approval of engineering contract with Clinton Engineering for the design of improvements to South Jefferson Avenue at the intersection of the extension of West Cemetery Road. Sponsor, Mr. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, during the design of the new school on South Jefferson, traffic study was done and it was determined that South Jefferson needed to have some turning lanes added. We negotiated a contract with Clinton Engineering to do that. It's about 2,000 feet total length of the project. Price that we negotiated was $38,000, and that will be split between us and the school system.
Okay. Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
Move approval. Second.
Have our motion second. Any discussion by the council? Seen no comments. All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. At that time, that concludes our business of our regularly scheduled meeting. At this time, we have for, floor up for hearing of citizens and/or delegations, and I'll also open up the floor to the council for any comments. Do we have any comments from the audience? Yes, ma'am. You just please identify yourself.
Mayor, members of the council, I'm Ellie Lindhart, and I'm here on behalf of the West Side Business Association. Last time I was here, I told you that we would try to send a representative each month just to kind of keep you up to date with what's happening on West Side. What I'd like to say is that we did meet this past Tuesday, and some pretty exciting things are happening on West Side that I'd like to share. First of all, on Wednesday evenings, we were approached by the Friends Group of the Putnam County Animal Shelter to ask if West Side would be interested in hosting a special evening on Wednesday nights for pet owners and their dogs. And so, Scott Brown at Thomas Andrews volunteered to help with this pilot program. And Woof Woof Wednesdays, I believe it's happened twice, where pet owners have brought their dogs and they've enjoyed not just people snacks, but puppy snacks. And so, it's been kind of a cool thing to happen on West Side. And it is actually something that I understand happens in Nashville with quite, quite a big success at the Lowe's Vanderbilt, I think. So, we feel quite honored that we're at that caliber. Also, to let you know, on West Side, we are continuing to encourage our business owners to update and clean up both sidewalks and areas around their buildings. And even though the weather's been a bit hot and a lot of our plants have been a little droopy, we continue to be dedicated to that and to beautification on West Side. Next, we have, in cooperation with the Department of Tourism and the Chamber of Commerce, we have two trains coming in October, October the 17th and October the 24th. And Laura Canada and the folks at the Chamber have asked that West Side and the West Side Business Association get on board and do some, something fun and interesting to encourage our visitors from Nashville to not only enjoy the day they visit, but also to come back. And so, we're in the process of looking at both music and art, and hopefully encouraging business owners on West Side to be open, and working with the restaurants in sending copies of menus to Nashville so that the folks on the train can think about their lunch before they get here. We're also hoping, we have had a request from our car cruise-in folks to continue their cruise-ins on the first Saturday of the month of September and the month of October, and then to take a break for the winter. This has been an event that has been minimal as far as disruption, I believe. We've not had any negative comments that I've heard from the restaurants, actually positive in that they've seen an increase in business. And so, we hope that that event will be able to occur this Saturday and the first Saturday of October. Lastly, I come with a couple of requests from the folks on West Side. One is, I know that it has been hot, but as the fall comes on, we would appreciate it if the public works or parks or recreation, leisure services folks would take a look at our planters. Some of them have been kind of beaten down, and we'd love for them to just take a look and maybe refurbish them this fall. The next thing we'd like to encourage you to consider and to take a look at is we've had some drainage problems behind the buildings on Broad Street in the area of the street directly across from the depot. There've been some drainage issues behind some of those buildings. And I know Mr. Brown's aware of it and has been very good about telling us that we're on the list, but we do have winter coming on, and so we'd like for you to consider taking another look. And the last thing, which we'll probably continue to ask for, for a long time, is for you to take a look at the intersection of Oak and Broad, just because of concerns that we've had from our citizens and from our West Side business folks about that intersection and it being very difficult to see when you pull out or when you cross as a pedestrian. So, thank you very much for your time, and I hope to be back next month.
Alright, very good, thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate you coming, and it sounds like some good things planned for the West Side. Any further comments from the audience? Comments from the council?
Just want to remind everybody about Fall Fun Fest.
Oh, very good.
Or were you gonna do that?
No, no, that's good, I'm glad you reminded us.
Not this weekend, but next weekend, and hope everybody comes out for that.
That'll be good. That'll be really good. Any other comments?
Well, we had six, was it five or six new student firemen that-
Oh, yeah.
Had a graduation last week, I think, or week before. That was very impressive, and we're glad to have those people on board. And I know the department's glad to have trained individuals now to help them.
Very good. Any other comments? Seen none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So move.